Yes.
I make the motion to re- make the meeting from our recess.
Oh, so.
So, I like what the mayor said too, personally, A, B, C is easy.
So like.
But it felt like.
Too easy?
The staff wasn't crazy about that.
So like this, like that, like A, B, C.
Oh, okay, okay. And then everything else, that's it.
So that, that makes it very easy.
I thought you meant like action item, A, B, C, D.
No.
No.
No. It's the actual topic, agenda is A.
Cause I'm the one.
Action items are B.
Exactly.
Like that?
Items of discussion, so if we're items of discussion, instead of saying.
Title two, but just do like agenda item.
Christine, instead of saying I, D, three.
B.
We're saying, okay.
Items of discussion.
We're removing. In section.
So then we know what section, but still.
C one or something.
That's all I was talking about before too, she was like, I don't know if I want to get.
Right.
That's all I meant. I prefer that too.
So still have the title.
Yes.
But add A.
Yes.
Like agenda item, A.
That's in section.
Action item, B.
Yeah.
Letter headers, number items.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Letter header, number items.
Yeah. And FYI, if you look at our ordinances, we have a system, so you go from capital, right? In brackets, to one in brackets, to just a plain one, to a plain letter. Yeah, so whatever we do in the village, we should kind of try to stick to that same format. That's the way I look at it.
I like that.
Okay, so there's that. Yay, awesome. My little.
I just want to go over all the takeaways when you're done.
Okay, and so I have, I think I had one more on my list, but I'm jumping around in my packet, so I have to go back to the other items. Uh, oh. We talked about this too, Christina. So Christina and I agree that an agenda item title should never insinuate what action may or may not be taken. So the idea that we say, consider approval, uh-uh. Unless you would also say, consider denial, the word approval and denial should be taken out of any title.
Yeah.
It should always say, and I'm fine if you guys want to go back to discuss and consider, you know, we used to say discussion, consideration, I don't care about that part, but you don't want to put the word approval.
Of approval, yeah.
In there.
I agree with that. Is discussion and consideration is fine, right?
I think they wanted to, I'm okay with that, that's the old way, but it's long, and I'm, so I'm okay if they want to go back to consider and discuss or, right? Isn't that what you guys wanted to do?
Mm-mm, I would prefer consider blank, discussion blank, not discuss and consider.
That's okay with me, that's short.
Why can't we do consider, discussion and consideration?
It, it just makes the title long, in my opinion, but we'll do whatever you want.
But if you consider it, you're, or if you're considering it, then you're going to vote on it.
Right.
Which I guess is implied that you're going to discuss it, right?
Yes, usually.
Well, I mean, you never know.
I mean, if you.
So discussion is just discussion.
Yes.
We're not going to take any action.
That's how I would interpret it, yes.
Okay.
Whereas if we're discussing and considering.
Blank or consider blank.
If we're considering it, we know we're going to discuss it, because we're going to have debate on it, and then we'll vote on it.
Yeah.
Discussion is we're just talking about it.
Right.
Okay. Fine with that.
Okay. Except for direction to staff and stuff like that, right?
Well, yeah, that's like, not like, that's not like a voting action. This is like, okay, we've talked about this stuff, let's make the appropriate actions.
Action notes, okay.
Yeah, I just, I just assume in the, like, action items where it says, consider, that obviously discussion is implied, because.
Right.
Right, right.
So I just didn't feel like it was relevant to add both of them.
Okay, that's fine. I'm fine with that.
So on that same note, under the consent agenda.
No, I need a consent agenda.
So the consent agenda, because you are, your intention is to take that action.
Yeah.
The title should say what action the council is actually taking. So there shouldn't be a consider or a discuss in the consent agenda. It should simply say, adopt ordinance, accept treasury report, whatever it is, ratify.
All right, here, here's one.
Yeah.
Sorry, Robert. It's consider water bond release for Elysian Fields. So just say, release water bond for Elysian Fields.
Uh, it would actually say something to the effect of approve, what does it say? Approve.
No, it just says, consider water bond release for Elysian Fields.
So, and that's under the consent agenda, so it should say, approve water bond release.
Okay.
Unless somebody pulls it off, and then it has to be considered.
Right, right.
But otherwise.
Yeah, but then it changes.
They're not considering anymore, once it's on the consent agenda.
That's right.
There's no more consideration deliberation.
So.
Right.
All right, so like this one, it's consider of revised architect agreement. It should just be approve archi, revise architect agreement.
Yes.
I got it, okay. I'm fine with that.
And it makes it shorter for you guys, so I'm hoping some of this stuff will make it shorter for them too.
I'm fine with that.
Um, and it's also more proper, because we're taking action, right?
Right.
I think that kind of encompasses, and then whatever you did on this last agenda, to make it neater and cleaner, it looks really nice.
There's only one thing I'd add.
What?
I see, there's only one thing I'd add to this, since we're talking about meetings, but this is agenda format. Did I miss it? We talked about the meetings, agenda format?
Yeah.
Because, I don't know, it's a stretch. Right here, agenda format, that's what we're still on. But I, the, the thing we talked about, um, I knew, because I reached out to Nick, because of all, again, the timing, 11 o'clock, and then you having to be done, if we would consider as a council, moving it from 11 to 10, and that gives us an extra hour for the work session we was having, but I don't know if that's a stretch to call it.
I think that's a stretch, but why don't we put that on, can we put that on Tuesdays?
But remember, your meeting was at 10 o'clock, and we moved it to 11.
And he said that, and we talked to him about that, because he told me that last night, that his thing may go off, and he's got like an hour and a half window once he goes off, and I said, okay.
And, and, yeah, because he said that he was fine moving it back to 10 o'clock.
Okay, because I know before he was having trouble with the sleeping.
Yeah.
So then can we, we want to make a motion, but we'll talk about, just for a quick discussion.
Well, here's the thing, that would be perfect on.
With a consent.
If you can, yeah, it's just approve regular schedule change from 11 to 10.
Which means then Barbie has to go back and make sure all those corrections are made on the website.
Right, but we've approved it.
And, and if somebody wants to sit there and talk about it, we can pull it off, but that's a good form of consent. Okay.
See, we're getting things done.
All right.
Anything else?
All right, Mary, you said three things ago, you have one more thing, so.
Do I, I think I, I hit it, we got the numbering, we got the consent agenda, we got the, everything else looks good, okay.
I mean, I, I mean, I'm great with those things. There we go. Yes, recap, recap away.
I've got one question that I don't know what, what I wrote, what I meant to write here. Um, so we're going to label all the agenda titles for just regular meetings, unless it's a special.
Yep.
Yay.
Add public comment policy within the agenda itself.
Yep.
Letter headers, number items.
Letter header, number item.
No use of the word approval, only consider and discussion, unless it's in consent.
Right, okay.
And then I've got a note that says, add minutes for items, I don't know what.
Oh, the minutes, the minutes, like how long each agenda item should take.
That's right.
Yes, times.
Times, time minutes.
So we can start kind of getting a grasp on how long this meeting is going to go, and if we can add things, because at some point, you know, it's first in, first out, so if someone comes to you and wants to get on the agenda, you can tell them, look, based on what we have on the timestamps, and it's probably a little longer.
Right.
We, we're going to move you to this one, you know.
Oh, and in addition to that, sorry, I was just going to say, here's the other great thing about that, if you can put it on the draft agenda that comes to us, and somebody says, you only have staff five minutes for this, but I really know I want to talk about that longer.
Yeah, then you can.
You get an idea of what other council members are thinking about something's going to take.
And when you're sending stuff, be like, hey, I think this is going to take no more than five minutes, or this may take like 30 minutes.
Yeah.
And then that way, like, when we're sending stuff, we'll give you a better idea too.
Exactly.
So I'm only identifying time limits on the headers, like agenda items, action items, 30 minutes.
Like, yeah, on the, on the letters.
Not the individual items themselves.
No?
No. No, see.
See, I, and I used to change it, see, public hearing, you can do that, because those are a couple of minutes each, but in new business and old business.
See, that one says 90 minutes for old business, or new business.
Oh, it does, doesn't it?
I mean, you can break it down, I'm fine breaking it down even further.
Sometimes we do, but it would depend on the agenda, I think.
You want to start with headers?
Start with the headers, and we'll see how it works. Okay. Oh, and kind of do one more action item that's kind of related to this, since it's the agenda. We're, you're going to work on finding a date for the special meeting, Barbie?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay.
So that's exciting, thank you.
Yay. Okay, all right.
All right, so are we good?
Should we cap everything?
Yeah, I think she did.
All right.
Next up, we have discussion.
Nope.
Oh, that's tabled to Tuesday. Uh, next, revision of minute approval.
Hold on, can I go back to that one real quick, you were exampleing it?
Yeah.
I don't have anything in my packet on that, Mary. Do you have stuff, the economic or the conflict of interest?
No, I haven't, I, I have, I haven't, I've been meaning to take that off, um, because, yeah, it should be conflict of interest forum, I think I inadvertently since, changed the name in the email, and so they changed it for me, but I, I, that's just conflict.
So was it just our conflict of interest forum?
Yeah, you guys earlier in the fall had said that I could work with staff to do it.
Right.
Obviously, we haven't had time to work together.
Okay.
And.
But you think you're going to get this drafted for tomorrow?
Yes, I have it drafted.
Okay, okay.
If you want to go to the work session, we can, but.
How about if I don't get it to you, from you, or Barbie or I don't get it by tomorrow? Because we have to get the agendas out tomorrow.
Yeah.
So tomorrow by lunch?
Even more, I'll, I'll go, yeah, that's fine.
Is that?
Then take it off. And put on work sessions, I just haven't had time to.
No, sorry, I was just like, I don't have anything.
I haven't done.
No, we're going to table it tomorrow.
But I haven't reviewed it in, I don't know how long, so I don't want to put it out there until I review it.
And that's conflict of interest.
Yeah, conflict of interest. Sorry, I was just like, I don't have anything, so I wanted to make sure that I had a.
I just haven't put the draft out there.
No, 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 okay.
Um.
Sorry, Joe.
I was, yeah, and Christine and I haven't really had a chance to meet you over it either. Okay, so.
Next up is revision of minute approval goals.
Yeah, and I revised this last week without Barbie being present, so I'm, I'm hoping she's okay with this, I just wanted to let y'all know, since we have been trying to get all these approved, that at the next meeting, which is Tuesday, we would have the meetings that I have highlighted here.
Okay, what about, what, where's the 2/8/19 retreat? Does that, I haven't seen those minutes anywhere.
Barbie, is that, I know you were working on those, do you have, you got them?
Yeah, I haven't got them finished.
Okay.
I'm still wor, I'm, I'm.
That's okay.
I'm just.
All right, so we're to, so we're to the 3/12? I'm sorry?
Yeah, 3/12 through 5/15, is that accurate, Barbie?
What's that?
You have the schedule in here somewhere, I'm trying to find it again.
It's, uh, it's literally right after your.
I got 5/15 already.
Uh.
No.
Uh, la, 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 la.
No, I mean, I'm still working on 28.
Regular meeting.
3/12. Yeah, because I'm.
Okay, so she's probably only going to have the month of March.
Okay, that's fine.
Not the April, May ones.
Okay, that's fine. That's three, I feel like three, three a meeting.
And then we are almost caught up to where we need to be.
So, and like, I misunderstood what it said, can we talk about a process?
Did you find it?
No, I mean, I have my own copy of it, but, what pa, oh, you guys don't have the pages.
No, I'm sorry. It's right after your, it's right after the, um.
Here, you want mine?
Agenda format.
Do you want it?
Wait, rules of procedure.
Keep going.
Oh, there it is, I found it, sorry.
Right after you ripped it out.
You, sorry, usually I bookmark it in my PDF, I didn't get a chance, I'll sign it. Um, all right, so here it is, that, so I don't know if this is really covered by that, but can we discuss a meeting process, maybe even incorporating some other technological tool? We all have access to Word, right? So the clerk can post.
I know, but that's okay, I'll, I'll get it done. No, I just.
It's an app, you can download it.
I know, specifically, I, I probably have it on my phone, but I work off my computer, and I specifically, when I retired, said I'm not going to be forming documents.
Hello?
Retired, that was.
A long time ago.
14 years, 15 years ago.
All right, all right, keep going, Mary.
So, I'm thinking that with SharePoint or something, there's got to be a way to be able to post the agenda, and Kim can go in and make her changes, they're tracked, I can go in and make my changes, they're tracked, and everybody can see what the changes are without doing it at the same time, because that would be an illegal meeting, but we've got, I think we need to investigate some other way of making sure that, um, some of these minutes are, if you even care, I mean, maybe nobody cares what I have to say about minutes.
No, I, I, I agree, it's just that, it's just the, the time it just took to get all of this, so there was a process, and I'm all for, if you're doing your thing, and you're sending it to her, whether it's spelling.
But I think what you're saying is not, or I think what Mary's saying is not sending it to Barbie, just having one place where we can, she, she's like, here it is finished, and wherever it is, and then I can go on at my leisure, Mary can go on at her leisure, you can go on at your leisure, and then we can make track changes. Now, what if I agree with your track change, can I can say, KB, goods?
And just so you know, that was part of the problem I was having, is that I knew that there would be things I'd add that you, that people wouldn't agree with, but I didn't know how we were going to end up negotiating that, and so you end up just prolonging everything.
Right.
And so if we don't, so. So why don't, yeah, if there's another mechanism where we can in real time do it, we can work some crap out before we get to a meeting.
And there's literally no way we're going to have this done for Tuesday, so why don't we just not have these on the Tuesday meeting? Okay?
That's work for me.
I mean, because there's no way that we're going to have something figured out, but why don't we, why don't you guys work on figuring something out for Tuesday? Hang on, then you let us know on Tuesday, and then we'll use the 3/12, what is BWS? Budget Work Session? We'll use the 3/12 minutes as our guinea pig for the 6, whatever, 27, or whatever that meeting is, and we'll throw it up on the screen, and we'll go through it and see if it works.
Yes.
How does that sound?
And I'm going to defer that to Barbie, whatever she sees fit, because she's the one that handles the process.
What do you think about that, Barbie?
You coming up with some type of process that works for you, monitoring all the track changes, and then?
And I think I can recommend technological solutions.
That's.
Where you might even be able to do two, if that helps, Barbie, because I know that sometimes it's a matter of other apps or add-ons.
So basically, don't have any meeting minutes on Tuesday's agenda, but by Tuesday, collectively, you guys come up with, however it's going to work, and I'm agreeable to whatever, come up with however it works, and then we'll use the 3/12 minutes as our guinea pig, and look at it on the 6, whatever, 27, whatever that date is.
6/27.
Yeah, 6/27 meeting, and then we'll use that as our guinea pig to see if it worked.
So can, can we all agree that, like, say if there were spelling errors, or, you know, like, a word was missing or something like that, that is, is that something you can go individually to Barbie to say, okay, that spelling issue is.
Do that in the track change.
You'll do that.
Do that in track change.
Yeah.
Because then it's all in the same place.
I don't have trouble with what you're saying there, but I've got to be honest, and again, I, I know everyone is really trying hard to get these out there fast, but when I see like incomplete sentences, it drives me mad. If we do bullet points, awesome, but it should be one or the other. You either take it and do a bullet point, say, well, you'll see in the things that I wrote, often what I was trying to do there was create a template to say, and the, you know, so and so gave the following updates, then you can bullet point, this is happening, this is happening, this is happening, you don't have to worry about set full sentences, but if you put it in paragraph form, I expect to read a sentence, not, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'm trying to delineate the difference between a grammar change and missing a word and a spelling, whatever, and like.
Yeah.
If it warrants bullet points on a discussion and stuff, it's just that, you know, I mean, it's, again, we try to go to verbatim, if a meeting is already taking five hours, verbatim is going to take staff probably eight hours.
Sure.
Or more.
So we're trying, that's why we're trying to get to high level, and if it means bullet point, like, discussions were between boom, 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 a motion was made to do this.
But they also timestamp that stuff.
But timestamp it, so people can go and get specifically who said what, because again, it's just about, I think we agreed, the high level is what we were trying to get for, and only, and only if verbatim minutes were requested, but that was done by the individual requesting it, not staff, and then staff at some point would have to review and confirm that that was accurate.
Yeah, well, I don't, and I don't want to get into an argument over it, but as much as you say high level, the minutes technically, and I can produce the manual, if you like, but from the minute guru from this ruling government, that the minutes belong to the council, so if it seems that only comments from certain people are covered and not others, it was always protocol that everybody had a chance to be sure that they were adequately and accurately covered in those meeting minutes, so it's got to be one or the other.
So may I interrupt right there, because I'm, I'm thinking about something that may be able to solve this without getting into bullet points, and that goes back to my high level, and discussion was made on roads, boom, I, you know, discussion, and you're timestamping when that discussion was made, if, uh, a, a good debate was made, whatever, you, however you want to word it and stuff, a motion was made, and then see who voted who, and if somebody wants to see specifically, instead of getting into bullet points, where you were fighting over, oh, you had this bullet point, but my bullet point wasn't in there, it's, the, a healthy debate was discussed on road improvements or approving roads, then it's time stamped, it's very vague, it's not vague, it's more, just simply put, it's not editorialized or anything. It's generalized, and you have the exact motion and who made the motion.
With the timestamp there.
With the timestamp, and you have the vote, that person who's really interested, I want to know what Mary said, I want to know what, then they get on, they go to the timestamp, and yes, they're going to have to take a little bit of their time, because it's becoming an issue with us saying, oh, am I getting my words in there, you're not getting your words in there. You know what, if they want our words, come to the meeting, and, um, we're getting on that timestamp, we're not saying, listen to the five hour meeting, if you're really interested who said what at that meeting, go to that timestamp, and then just listen to that section. Hopefully, if it's time stamped, that we're only taking 20 minutes on that subject anyways and stuff, but it's, it is what it is.
Can I?
Yeah.
I will say that I agree with that, except here was the problem I was having, and I'm, and I'm not, and this is why consistency is important, quite frankly, there were some meeting minutes, the most recent ones were like that, go to the timestamp, even if you don't have it in there, you can find it, but there were other times, literally, where there would be a paragraph on, not saying, paragraph on what Kim said, paragraph on what the mayor said, a paragraph on what Nick said, and it literally zip, nothing, as if my, Robert and I weren't there. That's editorializing too, and that's why it is important that, you know, whoever's doing these minutes, that if we're, that's really what we want to do, I'm all for it, but it's just got to be fair.
I think that's where we need to get.
That's got to be fair across the board.
I think that's where we need to get to.
Where I, where I looked into the fall, and it was like this paragraph, and then all of a sudden it would be like nothing.
The only, the only time where is you're giving specifics of what you said and stuff should be in your council comments, and, and that's you, as you say, where I'm not going to change your council comments, I'm going to say, you know what, I actually said this, and I'd like this to be reflected in that, but when it comes to minutes, there really should be, this was, the discussion was on.
Roads.
Ex roads, and a healthy debate was between all council members, and a motion was made by so and so, it, it, it says that the discussion was had, everybody's giving their opinions and stuff, instead of fighting about whose opinion is in the minutes, when it ends up, at the end of the day, it comes down to the motion, what motion was made, did it pass or did it not pass, and who voted for it.
But do you understand why I'm saying it has to be all or nothing?
I agree.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Because that's what I was finding, what I was going through, is I was like, okay, sometimes it's bare minimum, and other times.
Is that a good, is that a good compromise, Barbie, is that something that?
I would ra, I would rather it be that way.
Okay, well then, let's do that, let's, let's try that, with the timestamp.
Yeah, let's, let's talk, let's have that on the agenda to discuss it, so we can have Robert and Nick.
But not, not on the 6/4.
Okay.
Like, like, let's do, like, let's.
I thought that's what you were going to do, is, is talk about a process, in that what you were going to talk about on 6/4 was the process.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry, yes. On how to, yes, yes, so we can talk about it then.
So the me, yeah, the meeting minutes on, on some kind of joint editing app?
Yes.
And then.
And then we'll use, and, yeah, and we'll use the 6/12 minutes for the BWS and the REG as our guinea pig.
And technically.
Right?
There should, there should be a lot less people getting on the computer and fact-checking stuff, instead of like, okay, we had a discussion on roads, and yep, I remember Kim.
Right, there should be a lot less, there should be a lot less track changes.
And I remember that, less track changes, which is what we want.
I agree.
And we're all coming together at that meeting, where we're like, that should be an easy read for all of us.
But you know, that's where preparation for meetings comes into, I got to, you know, this is all part of marginalizing, if everybody has done their, worked their packet, has a general idea of where they stand, they come in, they say their piece, the minutes are bullet, 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 action, right? I mean, that's it. But then as, I, you, I think you all agreed, there are a lot of meetings in there where that wasn't exactly happening.
Agreed, yeah. Right, but everybody's gotta get better at that. And I'm just saying, everybody just as a board.
Mm-hmm.
Barbie, does, are you good? Do you have, do you need any clarification on what we rely?
A little clarity on what you mean by using three twelve as the guinea pig.
Okay, so only, so for the six thirty or six twenty seven meeting, only send us the six twelve. Budget work session and regular session, meeting minutes. Only send those when, when the agenda packet goes out. What did I say, six twelve?
Six twelve.
Three twelve, three twelve.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Um, no, I'm just kidding, um. Only send those to us and we, in our budget, in our packet, and then we will go out to whatever you guys tell us on six four. We will go out and make all of our track changes and see, see how it works. And then when we come in on six twenty seven. Whatever we're using, share whatever, we're gonna put it up on the screen. And we're gonna see what it looks like with everybody's changes and additions and subtractions.
Okay, so real, let me simplify this.
Does that make sense?
I, I think I can help you.
Okay, sorry.
Six four, we're gonna add a discussion item to talk about the process. Everybody's gonna come prepared with their ideas. Barbie's gonna do some research and see if she has an idea.
They're gonna come prepared with their ideas. I can't help you with that.
If they don't happen.
I can't help you with that.
If they don't happen to talk between now and Tuesday, it'll be a discussion item that takes place at that meeting. And then, at the time that the six twenty seven agenda comes out. Y'all will have gone through the process that you decide on six four. Does that make sense?
Correct, with these, with the three twelve nineteen minutes, just those minutes.
And what we're talking about on Tuesday is actually what we want to see in the minutes, high level. We don't want verbatim and all, but we're gonna have that discussion.
I would, do we need them?
But I'm a little confused on she, are you wanting, are you wanting the, the March twelfth to be like that?
I would like it, yes.
Because they've already, they're already transcribed, so I'm gonna have to go back.
Well.
No.
Then, then.
Don't redo anything, but, but going for whatever you haven't done yet. Start doing that, the new high level.
High level, discussion was made, timestamp and uh the motion that was made.
Okay.
This, this will, this will really should reduce a lot of the.
Yeah, well, you have to also.
And I mean this, we still have to keep transparency in there to some extent. You still have to be able to say, uh, bullet point. Aside from the content. What I tried to do is take the meeting minute template that you guys were using in the last few months. And I don't know if you know how to use styles or anything like that in Word. So literally, you just click on a button and it automatically changes. All the headings the same, it changes, do you guys know, you know how to do it? Yeah, okay. So what I was hoping was that we would establish a met, a meeting template. I could give it to you guys. And from that point on, it should be easier for Barbie to do. Every heading starts the same, someone open with a report on and then it's bullet point, bullet point, bullet point.
Well, what, what bullet, but that's where we get into the argument of. What bullet point do you bring in, what do our eyes is like, oh, I said that, I didn't say that. All it is is discussion.
What the, well, the staff report and the information, right? So um. I'm trying, I was trying to open up a section and all of a sudden I can't. When she puts her administrative report, she puts out two or three things that a lot of the public would like to know about, right? Um, not a hard thing now. The landscaping in the middle of the roundabout, the um repairs in Canterfield Creek, the whatever the case is. If those things and that information should be still, I mean, that information should be provided, is my point. You still have to be able to tell people what. If you see a, an agenda item, I think I mentioned it in one of the notes, it said something like. Staff protocol, I had no clue. And I was at that meeting, I was reading the minutes, I had no idea what that item was. It said approve things as amended in the meeting. Well, first of all, I don't know what the topic of the discussion was. So now when you make a motion to approve it, the way the changes were made in the meeting, I'm like, well, what changes? So that's not transparent at all.
So, so how about this, is you guys are obviously preparing our information for what we're gonna discuss. So the bullet points should really only be from what staff had found out. I- i- in that respect, because I'm, I'm telling you, it's gonna go back to, well, I made this bullet point and it's not in there. And what we're saying is, you can hear that bullet point if you go click on the timestamp and you can say, yep, Mary said that. And she was on the record for saying that. But then it gets to the, that's what high level meetings, but if you're saying that. If they're preparing documents for us where we're reading it. And items of discussion in this roads thing was curb and gutter, all those things and stuff. A, a healthy debate was made and a motion to do this was that, that's what I'm, I'm, we're. I would like to see we get to, to take less effort off staff and less track changes, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, and I hear what both of you were saying and, and it makes sense. I, there's gotta be a happy medium and we're, we're, we're gonna fumble through it for a little bit. As we're, as we're redoing, as we're, Barbie, you said that you've gotten through three twenty eight?
Yeah, I'm working on three twenty eight now.
You're working on, okay, so. So we've only got like two meetings that we're gonna have to fumble through a little bit. And we'll do our track changes up here and we'll, we'll do this kinda together and we'll hold hands and we'll try to work through it together. But then going forward, Barbie, you can do, you know, kind of the high level. But get, you know, get, get whatever the agenda item was, you know, um.
So they know what we're discussing.
Discussion of ETJ, Rohit told us what Weddington and Waxaw said, um.
Even better, Rohit made the following points, right? That way you don't even have to write sentences, Rohit made the following points. ETJ is gonna cost somebody, you know, tax dollars. We won't have input, more people on our boards, the council decided, boom.
The council decided not to move forward.
But when it gets into the council making the points, that's where it gets into a.
But that's why I'm saying, but, but there's gonna be, so, okay, so, so here's, okay, so hold on, so here's agenda formats. That Mary, that's on here under Mary, so you do agenda format. Council discussed, change of the agenda, pick three things that they decided to discuss. Agreed, moved on. Now, if it's something that like we're voting on, so say the, the roads improvement one, the, the twelve five that we just approved, so. Road improvement capital, project budget, whatever, this was discussed, you know, administrator said X, Y, Z. There was a motion made by me, it was unanimous by council. With the timestamp and then, and then everybody who wants to listen to that can go listen to it. I don't think that we need to put stuff in there that goes back and forth. When we're debating each other.
Right.
I think that's gonna get hairy.
I'll be honest with you, I agree.
Hairy.
It was like when you see it though, on one side and then you're like, well.
I agree, no, I agree.
That's where the staff has to be able to be really objective.
Yeah, so Barbie, that's gonna fall on you.
And so she has, and I, and it's important that you're thinking about every council member, that the dissenting view and the other view is bullet pointed. But somebody can generally have an idea of how the road, a road got to their decision.
And again, I think it's gonna be a little bit of.
Yeah.
Growing pains and, and, but we'll work through it. I think we've got a, can I just make a suggestion?
No.
I think.
I think y'all are talking about two different things, you're talking about the process in general that we are discussing at six four. And then you want to talk about the level of detail that's.
We're talking about the same thing.
But you're talking about level of detail and then the process.
Oh, yeah, we're talking, there can be two things, yeah. But I don't know that we need to talk about the level of detail in the six four meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's actually part of your rules of procedure changes that are gonna need to take place.
That's why I was thinking we were talking, gonna talk, maybe talking about them today, but.
So, I mean, I've got in my notes, I've got the rules of procedure changed to six four. But if we wanna just go ahead and give some time to think about the process, it's, no, I'm sorry. The level of detail that's in the minutes and then we can amend our rules of procedure to reflect that desire of council.
I have an idea, oh, oh, oh.
But, but at six four.
What if we get the next set so perfect? That it ends up, uh, cause I always love this when we do this in the organs, you'll see in the ones I've written. You put a visual addendum. To the rules of procedure that says, this is more or less the level of detail and whatever that it should look like. And then it helps not, it helps the staff, it helps the council, you know what I mean? And, and so if we can hash that out, it gives, provides guidance and it's visual.
So at six four, we're gonna talk about minute process as far as.
Is how, is how we're going to review.
Change management, I call it.
There you go.
Um, good, good title, change management.
Yeah.
And then, are y'all in agreement to talk about the actual level of detail slash rules of procedure changes slash addenda? Um, at the six twenty seven meeting?
Yeah, I think, cause Barbie's gonna do her thing, right, for the set, the twelfth, um, right?
Three twelve, yeah.
March twelfth, if we're looking at it, we don't make changes, but we talk about what it looks like, right?
And if we can use that in the discussion too.
And then let that be the guide.
This should be less, this should be taken out, this should be, but we're still gonna make our changes for that one. So we know how the change management system works.
But then like, so there are two conversations going on.
Correct.
One about, yeah, I'm comfortable with this level of detail.
Or too much, too less, and then change.
Yes, and then change management.
So with the March twelfth meeting minutes, y'all are going to be changing the level of detail potentially.
Not, not coming into it, but I think when we're looking at it to see if the change management system works. Then we can look at it and be like, you know what, that's not necessary, or we should really expand on that, or. That could just go away altogether.
So that'll be a precursor for your rules of procedure discussion.
Right? Yeah.
So in that case, would y'all rather the rules of procedure discussion be in the six twenty seven meeting and not the six four meeting?
We're not gonna talk about that stuff in the six four meeting.
You're not talking about the process.
We're, they're gonna tell us what the process is, but we're not gonna review it until the six twenty seven meeting.
So then I'll put the rules of procedure on the six twenty seven, not the six four.
Put it on the six twenty seven, but put it after.
The minute discussion.
Yeah.
And in between now and then, we will also take those minutes, aside from the change management question. We'll take the minutes that Barbie puts out. And we will hopefully internally, I don't know how we do it, maybe it can just be Kim and I or whoever and stuff, have a discussion. So that, about what we like, so that by the time we get to June meeting.
Yeah.
We have, hopefully, we'll have reached a consensus about what.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Meeting minutes.
I follow that, if we wanna look at that after the minutes come out for that, then we can come in here and sit down and.
Perfect.
Is that good?
I, that'd be great, I appreciate that.
Barbie, are you good? Do, do you need more clarification? No?
Um, I think I got it.
You got it, okay, well, if not, when we come in to sit down, then we can all sit down together.
Yeah.
When is that gonna happen?
Uh, not till like, couple, couple weeks from now.
So we'll add one item to the meeting on six four, which is basically change management. And then from there, we will basically direct further.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
That's good. Okay, yes Rohit?
One specific point of clarification.
Yes.
Um, I've been, uh, I'm, I'm really happy to help with uh, at the, defining the platform for this. But there's one thing that I heard at this meeting, which is gonna affect that um process, which is. Um, if you have a software that edits in real time, where people can collaborate. Um, does that, does that constitute an illegal meeting?
Well, that's what I was saying before, so we don't want real time. We don't want Kim and I to be on there at the same time, to, uh, together unless there's a limiting factor, right?
Yeah, we're not knowing that we're all on at the same time.
It would, it would be some, so that's why I was a little worried about saying real time, but. Something, it's okay for two of us to be on at the same time, but it would, it's best and safest to be a format where. These changes are done and then someone else can log on.
Or maybe find a system that only allows two to be on it at any one given time.
Okay.
But yeah, that's a good point, that's a good point.
I made a good point?
No, Rohit did.
So, but ideally. So ideally, the system would be that you individually submit your changes to a.
Yeah.
Central system.
But we can see them all, can they integrate, is there a way to integrate all of them?
Like I'm thinking, and I haven't investigated this in a while, but I'm thinking like. And Microsoft probably has an equivalent, but Dropbox has a new thing called Paper. And you can actually go log on, yeah, everyone creates their account, they log on. And then they put down their, their changes and it says, Kim made these changes and it's one color. And then I go in and go and say, Mary made these changes.
So then everybody can see them kinda simultaneously. Or we can go in and say, oh, I like Mary's changes, I'm good with those.
He, here's a.
Here we go.
Well.
Wild idea.
No, I'm thinking that fifty thousand, hey, once we figure this all out, if you wanna take the time to do this. Hopefully, we get to the point where we have a meeting on June fourth. By June twenty seventh, you have the minutes that are all in there. And everybody in the work session. After the meeting, the work session, you have an hour set aside to run through that meeting that just happened, so it's all fresh in our minds. And we go through, everybody get a paragraph line, boom, boom, go get right through it and then.
But Barbie's gotta, but Barbie's gotta put the mi- minutes together.
I, I understand that, but what I'm saying, once we're all caught up, she's basically only doing, see, she's doing the June fourth meeting. And by June twenty seventh, she has the meeting minutes there. So in the work session, which nobody wants to come to us, and we're all sitting there at a table in the work session, we're saying. Paragraph one, we're all good, and you, by that time, you've are.
Cause we've already gone.
You've already done your own little things and your own little things, and so I just wanna make a point that, boom, can we strike that or can we add this? Then by the twenty seventh meeting, you just take what we just approved and put it on the consent agenda for the following meeting. So you're actually only one meeting behind, uh, you're, you're only one meeting behind, but it's a way to add it to the work session. You know, once we get caught up, we gotta get caught up first. We gotta get caught up and we gotta get the process right. But instead of this, this investment in, in this track change where everyone's gotta get on a computer. And then you are getting five different changes, we're sitting in the meeting.
No, she won't, no, she wouldn't get five different changes, she'd be able to download the end result, right? The only thing that would be up for conversation would be maybe two people conflicting, but.
Well, that's my point, yeah.
But if we have the format approved, see, that's why we're doing this in tandem. If we all agree on the level, right?
Then there, it should just be like a grammar or like.
It should, right, right.
And again, that's why it's gonna, we're gonna have a little bit of growing pains, but if we're on top of it and we just. Buckle down and do it in the six twenty seven meeting, then I think we can.
But, but that's our goal is what I'm saying, is once we get caught up, you get to a point where you have sent those minutes out. It doesn't have to come out in the packet, if you got it done in two weeks and we can get that, or within, in a week, you can send out, by the way, here's the minutes for.
Go ahead and review it.
Go ahead and send them and review them.
She's not even gonna send them out, it's gonna be like they're in X, Y, Z system, go look at them.
Right, but I'm saying, if, if I make changes, then you make, he, you make changes and you, or we're making five changes, then.
But it's all on one page.
But if it conflicts, then.
Then we can talk about it, then we talk about it in the meeting.
Just by the way, like everything else, right?
Yeah.
Every item where there's no consensus, you have to have a vote.
Right.
So it's the same idea with meeting minutes.
Right, so if there, if, if everything at once, if you go to X, Y, Z system and every single thing from every single person. Is the exact same, then those can go on the consent agenda, cause we don't need to talk about anything. If there's conflicting stuff, then, then you put it on the agenda and we talk about it and we just get it done.
Right.
But again, if we are in consensus on the format and how much level of details in there, then.
There shouldn't be much.
Again, we're, yes, there shouldn't be much, we'll work through it, but yeah.
Do you see like, not everything that someone offers is even political, like if somebody comes to the table and, I don't know, let's just say Robert, cause he's not here. It's, it's these people aren't here.
Call him out again.
Says, by the way, I looked at the footings at the Reasons property and they are in terrible shape, well. And then it changes the trajectory of the conversation.
Which they're not, if anybody's listening, they're fine.
I know, I was kidding, I was making it, I don't know why that came to me. But, and that changes the trajectory of the conversation, it's important, now Robert mentioned it, but I, it's salient to the point. So yeah, that, that's why I don't wanna say what people mentioned, do you see what I mean, shouldn't be there. But I think.
But it could be, it could be, um, it could just be X, Y, Z house.
Material fact.
Yeah, X, Y, Z house, you know, has some structural issues that we need to look at, which is not true, but.
And that, those are all in minutes as a bullet point should be material facts. What you found out, what you researched, you're getting it, those should be the bullet points, nothing political, just material fact.
Just the facts, ma'am.
Counsel had a discussion.
Counsel can sometimes offer material stuff, right?
Yes, yes.
So, but just the facts.
So we'll talk about those details at the rules of procedure.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so we gotta, yeah.
Discussion, uh, next up, what?
I gotta be done.
Oh, ten children. Okay.
We're not gonna get through the road acceptance policy.
Administrator's report, do you have much?
No, actually.
Uh, actually, can we back up to road acceptance policy, only to give maybe direction, couple minutes? I just want, so is that all right? Is that all right? I just want, in real general terms, I would like to make sure I'm on the same page with everyone else. When I say redo the road acceptance policy, I'm thinking. Reevaluate how we, how we, and I don't mean we, the engineer, evaluates um. What roads get done next. Like this idea that we just do one subdivision, it's not, it's not main, I don't know if that's maintainable, it might be. I don't know that it is.
That's a different discussion, that's the resurfacing agenda.
As opposed to acceptance?
Mm-hmm.
Well, see, in the road acceptance policy, they mushed the two together though.
We need to change the road acceptance policy period though, because we have stuff in there that we do not have that's definitely needed, so.
Okay, so then.
I've already made some changes.
I just assumed we were going with more or less the kinda stuff they put in there. And I think it needs to be a much broader.
Yeah, I think we're being dictated by DOT, they're saying, hey, we'll take over this and then that was the whole thing. We're gonna take over some good neighborhoods and bad.
But it's how we, it's like, I think it's two things, like you said, that are being mushed together and they either need to be. Like, it needs to be a broader um, uh, uh. Policy, not just road acceptance policy, cause one's road acceptance and everything that needs to be done for us to accept roads and then the repaving schedule. So it just maybe needs to be road policy and we have different.
Yeah.
You know, topics, but I think, I think they are being mushed together and I think that they're two very important things that cannot be mushed together.
So maybe we slash it and, and the next item so that we try to separate them out.
Yeah.
So do, I, I know we didn't get to this item at the um, action items, but y'all are gonna maybe award a pavement condition study at the next meeting? So if, if we do that, maybe it would behoove us to go through this road acceptance policy at the time we look at the results of the new condition. And then we can change up.
Yes or no, a little bit of both. See, I don't, this is just me, and I've been watching this for, these wheels on this road thing turn for a long time. And, you know, no one listened to me either, so I don't feel like the plans that have been put in place. Consider long-term cycles well enough.
You mean the, the scheduling?
Yes.
Okay.
And certain roads will be used more often and will have to be redone more often, so do we talk about a internal classification system, right? In terms of what roads get done, for example, the entrance road to Bridle Path. Might need to be done every ten years, not every twenty years. And I don't know that we have hit a level of granularity in terms of our policy that properly accounts for. How this whole machine's gonna work in the next five, ten, twenty years.
That's why most people have roads, department managers and they, they figure that all out.
They didn't ask me either.
We don't have that.
I mean, we don't have that level of expertise here.
And so that's why I'm saying.
Not yet, you don't.
The whole policy, I, I'm just putting it out there, I'm not saying I have, I know what to do, but I feel like. I want the staff to know at least what I'm thinking, what I'm saying.
That's a valid point, but again, yes. I think we need to, I think we need to do this kind of in tandem with a couple of different things, I think getting AMT in here is gonna be important. I think that.
Someone you partner up with.
Well, right, right. But I think that we need to have a decent idea of kinda what we're thinking, again, not which neighborhoods and not when they get done. But what the process of, of. Cause I don't even wanna say picking, cause I don't wanna pick them.
That's why I don't wanna see, yeah, I don't wanna say that either, I feel like if it's truly policy, question. Would it, sorry, I don't mean, I don't, I'm not gonna, I'm thinking, maybe, maybe we could, if you could find two or three other towns that are about the size.
Yeah.
And see what their policies are.
What's it, nobody else is small does this.
I've got Waxaw's policy in the agenda.
Waxaw's not our size, Waxaw has their own streets.
Yeah, they have their own.
I mean, they're.
And they have a tax rate to chase them on, yeah.
So, do y'all think that it would?
Behoove us? I love how you say that word, I know, I love it.
Do you think that it would benefit us to um, maybe have AMT here at the next work session so they could maybe give their suggestions as to how to move forward with a new? so they could maybe give their suggestions as to how to move forward with a new?
Didn't, I don't, I, I didn't think they'd give us the ideas the first time.
Yeah.
Well, how, how to structure our resurfacing scheduling?
I, I don't think we can do that until we get the new pavement condition done, because that was...
See, that's where I might disagree with you, only because, and I'm just, because I'm looking at the current schedule, and it gives us information about how roads are weighted and what we should take into consideration. So I almost feel like we could have a policy conversation without knowing which roads. That's the need to be picking.
Oh yeah, no, I agree with that.
Tell them the criteria.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I, I thought you meant have them...
So, the conditions study, the roads are what, the conditions are what they are, and what they are. Doesn't matter what, when we're gonna resurface, and so if we go through the condition study, and we get back that survey index that says, these are your conditions, from that moment forward, we have to do something with that information. And so from there, we take those, we take that direction that you all want, give it to AMT and say, come back with us with a schedule, based on those conditions.
On the criteria, and that's why...
But the criti, so, so then, okay, so...
That's when we're really truly not picking, I'll be honest. This idea that we do subdivision by subdivision, they don't do that in a regular town, right? They go to where the needs are, and so...
But AMT and DOT are the ones that said, this is what we're doing.
I don't think so. Didn't the council last time say they wanted to do subdivision by subdivision?
I mean, I think they said that, but...
It's easier for them to do it that way.
Mobilization, demobilization.
From a logistical standpoint, they're gonna go into one neighborhood and get that whole neighborhood.
And I know what you're saying, but I don't think that, I don't think us, I don't think we went to AM, I think we said it, and I'm saying we as a council, I didn't say it, but said, we wanna do whole neighborhoods at a time. I think that DOT, when they're doing that, they just wanna do the neighborhood, and get in, and get out, and not have to worry about money else.
And I think it's gonna come down to, at the end of the day, DOT is just really driving this. They're saying, okay, what they're gonna take on, because it's their responsibility. And what it's gonna come down to is, okay, said, okay, our budget this year for us to put in power bill funds and general funds is X, $200,000. So instead of them, us picking a neighborhood, we've got $200,000, what can you do? And what neighborhood is the next neighborhood that we can get that whole thing done? Because it's gonna come down to cost, we don't wanna go over that.
Okay, so, cause we all really don't wanna be, you know what I would, I would actually request that AMT or the staff do? When that PDS study comes in, did I get that right? PCS?
PCS.
I don't think there should be subdivision in road names by side, anything. If we're truly evaluating policy, you should have subdivision A, right? Road 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. You guys know what it is, but we shouldn't.
I don't care, I mean, that's fine.
From the public standpoint, I don't know what to tell them, because then they say, where are we at on the list?
Right.
That's, but see, that's where it ends up, right? Cause we are a legislative body that is subject to voting opinion, and I think that's when we...
But once it's decided, ABC, D, and we're not looking at, says, okay, we've, we've, uh, assigned $200,000 plus what you're gonna do, and that's gonna do, and then it's, it's released that, okay, by the way, ABC is...
But down the road, like, cause, cause it's, it's not gonna be a one year, it's gonna be like a five or six-year plan, what, I don't know, an eight-year plan, whatever, whatever they come up with. So it's, it's, and that will probably change again. The reason I don't like the criteria part of it is because if you look at what has happened this last time, it's, you're gonna pave all these roads, and we're gonna spend this money if you spend this money for these roads. So if you, if, so if you just strictly go by criteria, they can say, these are the worst roads, but we're only gonna pave these if you pave this 95% roads. So if you look at the criteria that way, like you can't, because then they're, cause they're basically saying, we're only gonna do this if you guys do this.
Is that why you're saying that's why AMT should come in? Cause they can...
Well, I, I think AMT needs to come in and tell you how their process works, because this is my assumption, is DOT is not in the residential road business, they're trying to get out. So, that, just like we saw with Firethorn, the initial motion that was made three or four months ago was to go ahead and move forward with Firethorn's roads that are not village paid. So my approach to them was exactly what y'all told me to do. Y'all, we will agree to accept Firethorn roads that you are gonna pay for, however, the ones that we are gonna pay for, we're not, we don't wanna go through that process. DOT wasn't interested in that, because they wanna get out of Firethorn altogether. They just don't wanna have isolated roads where they have ownership or not ownership. They wanna look at one neighborhood and say, we're done.
Yep.
Okay, so this is, might be veering, but it really isn't, and someone's gonna be amazed that I bring this up, but that's okay. To the mayor's point, we're really tied to what NC DOT is talking about. I have, I have, I have a level of discomfort with that too, to some extent. Especially because it prevents us from long-term planning, and I don't like not, I don't like...
But don't you think at a certain point, like, once they've paved it and they're over to us, then it's... Then they're out. They're like, we're not, we're not helping you guys pave. Once we own them, they're not helping us pave anymore.
And that's scheduled for the eight years, is that the eight years? But shouldn't we, before we get there, start thinking about what our own internal process is?
Yeah.
I, so, at what point do we start talking about tax increases? Thank you.
At what? Do we start thinking about what tax increases? Mary Scoot said that.
This is not me as Ron Salomea, this is Mary Scoot. It just feels like there's a lot that's coming at us, and it's been a really long time.
So here's the thing, we raised it, we raised it, a hundred percent went to 10 cents. It's not gonna bring enough in to even necessarily make much of a dent. Say if we doubled the tax from 5 cents to 10 cents, and you look at the actual number of that 5 cents, cause that's only against the assessed values, that's what, another half a million dollars? I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, some...
We get roughly 500 on the 5 cent that we have, so we have another 500.
Yeah.
And I'm only saying, and I, I just think, I'm not saying I'm pro or, for or against, may, maybe someone even wants to talk about it on the record. I will, I don't care.
No, I mean...
Well, could be a good survey question. Could be a good survey question when we get to that point, but also...
Cause we don't know about this road either, right? And how much money we're gonna have to pay for it? I mean, it gets to a point. How long has it been, Christina? 10 years, 11 years?
How long for what?
I brought this fresh now.
How long for what?
Uh, since they raised the tax rate.
Oh, it went down, it went down. I don't remember the exact date, but it's been more than 10 years.
Anyway.
13 years.
It's, it's not, I mean, it is something that needs to be, I gotta go, but it, it is something that needs to be discussed, because we can't do all these services at 5 cents, and I'll say it's Kim, so...
I've said it from the very get-go, nobody...
They put our names on there.
Like, once, once I get in-depth in talking to other municipalities, and I, and then, and I dig in, I says, oh, what's your tax rate? And I said, oh, now I get it.
That's why you can do these.
Why you're in the roads, road business now.
So we're not gonna take any, any...
Road acceptance policy, it needs tied to that, that's why I brought it up.
I'm gonna, if it's okay with you all, I'm not gonna put this on the 6-4 meeting, and I'm, I'm gonna do some more research and bring it back to y'all at the next work session.
I think doing it for work sessions is better.
Yeah, I think I was sorry, I got sidetracked myself, but if there are other municipalities like us and have policies that we can work at, maybe, that would be great, but if, if there aren't, there aren't.
So, the rest of this stuff on the agenda, I think we are tabled to...
What was last?
Report.
Uh, reports, that's it.
Yeah, we had administrator report, planning report, they tabled that.
That got moved up.
Okay.
No, we're gonna move it here. Uh, review of action items, council comments, and closed session inquiry.
Oh, we actually got far.
Yeah, we did, we did good.
Okay.
Wow, we did well.
Without the, we'll table the council comments.
Oh, I know you guys are rushing out, but I wanted to know what happened at the special meeting.
Not much of anything, other than he was just explaining what was gonna happen.
We told Robert to move forward, getting his engineer person out there to take a look, and...
So it was gonna be a couple hundred bucks for him to kinda...
See, but that was it, I mean, yeah.
I hadn't spoken to him.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't a, um, I mean, it was informative in terms of, it was, everybody thought that the site work was crazy expensive, and that was way too much, and more research needed to be done, and so at that point, it was just kinda let Robert go, and...
Did you, did all four of you go to NICO?
Nick did.
Yeah.
No, he wasn't there.
Uh, Rohit was there, and then John, Jones, and Christmas from Planted Ward were there.
Oh, that's good.
So...
Oh, good, okay, that's good.
Couple sets of us.
We stayed in the shade with a white board, bugs, and snakes, and poison ivy.
Uh, I'm glad that you all went out, and I just wanna know what the update was with...
Yeah, it was more just, Robert, you go find out more information, right, Rohit?
Yeah, not completely, uh, like, we didn't really take much action there, even that was something that you discussed in the previous meeting.
We'd already told him to do it, but I think he wanted to go out and just be like, listen. I think his point was, if the, if, if we do all this research, and the site work's still gonna cost $800,000, regardless of what we put here, that we, like, if it's just an amphitheater, and we still have to do $800,000 worth of site work, or if it's just a farmer's market, and we still have to do $800,000 worth of site work, then, then town hall pricing doesn't look as bad. But, but everybody agreed that the site work was crazy expensive.
And if they, they sectioned it out, and then later came back and said, okay, now we want a farmer's market after we have town hall there, but then that farmer's market could potentially, because of the site work that needs to be done, could potentially be way out of range, where we'll never get a farmer's market.
Yeah.[1706.02]